I am. I'm running for Commissioner because I've been in a position where I've been fortunate to advocate for the best interests of the citizens of the state of Wyoming over the last thirty years or so, and I think I can still do some good, and that's what I'd like to do.
Hey, good morning. Troy Thompson, raised here in Laramie County, went to Seton Catholic High School, graduated there in eighty-nine, went out east to Cornell University, got a degree in animal science, went out west, Washington State University, got my doctorate of veterinary medicine. At that time, was very blessed, kind of stumbled upon an opportunity to come back and work for Gene Cotton at Avenue's Pet Clinic. Did that for a couple of years, and then had a wonderful opportunity to buy Tri-State Veterinary Clinic, and that was about twenty-three years ago. So for the past twenty-three years, I've been a small business owner here in Laramie County, and I think that makes me uniquely qualified to serve on the county commission, because that's what we want. We want small business people. My lovely wife is from Pine Bluffs, Beth McNamee, she's here with us today. Together, we have raised eight kids, the last of which is still in the house, he's going to be a sophomore at East High School. I am the longest standing Commissioner, this is coming to the end of my third term, and it's a job that you can imagine as a veterinarian, I see some interesting things, but being a county commissioner is one of the most interesting things I have ever done, and still to this day, we do things where I say, wow, we do that as well. And so remarkably interesting, I love being a Commissioner, and I'm hoping that the voters of Laramie County will let me continue to do it. Thank you for being here today.
I'm Abby Mildenberger. I am not from Cheyenne originally. I grew up on the East Coast, came out to U-Dub, graduated there with a bachelor's in history. Since then, I have been primarily a stay-at-home parent for my four boys, and in the last couple of years, have been a part-time financial officer for a small business here in town. That's, I don't have quite as long a history to talk about, but I'm running just because, as a young parent, and I live out west of town, I've just been concerned about some of the issues, okay, sorry, just some of the growth rate to me in the county, and I just want to make sure that it's going to be a great place for my family to keep growing, and everybody else as well.
I'm Linda Heath, I'm a thirty-one-year resident of Wyoming, interrupted by a few years down in Texas when my husband was still active duty with the Air Force. We came here by choice to raise our family, and we've been very happy that we have made that decision. We could have gone back to Nebraska where I grew up, where more my family is, but we chose to come here to Wyoming instead. This is my, the end of my second term as county Commissioner. It's a job that I have really, really enjoyed. It's supposed to be a part-time job, but it can be a full-time job very, very easily, and it's what you make of it, how many hours you want to dedicate to the job and working with the people and the community interests. One of the reasons that I am running to be a county commissioner again is that I feel that there is work to be done to continue to make Laramie County a positive place for our children and our grandchildren to grow up, to work and to play, and for the residents of Laramie County to have a quality of life that they desire.
Great. Well, good morning, everybody. My name is Gerner Mom. I'm a sixth-generation Laramie County resident and current county commissioner. My day job is real estate. For fourteen years, I've been an owner of Coldwell Bank or the Property Exchange, so I also, like Commissioner Thompson, I'm a small businessman in the community, currently taking over the managing broker role there at that company. Finishing up my first term as Commissioner, I've been chairman for nearly half that time. It's been an amazing opportunity, and I feel really blessed to have had it, and for the voters to have instilled their confidence in me the first time, and I seek to do that again. I really like promoting business in our community. I fought hard for economic diversification, both at the legislature and locally, to protect and promote things like the data center exemption, which has allowed us to attract and bring in those large firms like Microsoft and others that are on the books. My background in private property rights and real estate, I've had the opportunity to fight for private property rights at the local, state, and national level, and currently serve as the federal political coordinator for Senator Cynthia Lummis's office and the National Association of Realtors. So I have a line and a history of fighting for private property rights, which I think is a very important aspect to the county Commissioner's job in our land use issues that we deal with. And I'm running to serve again, because I was brought up to believe that it's an obligation, not an option, to be involved in your community. Whether it's serving at the chamber, on a committee, in a nonprofit in your community, you are responsible for your own destiny and the destiny of your community. And so when the opportunity presented itself three and a half years ago, that there would be an opening on the commission, I felt that, given the time in my life, my background, I could lend my expertise and experience to the job. Was fortunate enough to earn that spot, and I think there's a lot of projects that we see on the horizon that I'd like to see come to fruition. We had a very successful six-penny ballot that I was chair of. I want to see those projects come, be built timely and on budget, and then continued efforts in economic diversification, expansions of our treatment courts and mental health services in Laramie County, and just love working with all of the residents and organizations that make this place the community that has given my family an amazing life for a hundred and forty years. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, candidate. So just moving forward, Will, wanted to give you a little flexibility on your introduction, but we'll, we'll ask you that you keep your responses to two minutes as we go forward, and then, I don't assume there would be among this group, but we always put it in there that if there is something that is confrontational, we'll give somebody a chance to respond if that pops up. So, just so you don't, I don't know for sure who the district attorney candidate is here watching this morning, but Sylvia, good morning. Keeping an eye on these guys, or yeah. Yeah, you would. Thank you, thank you for joining us this morning. So, before we take questions for the audience, a question that, kind of interesting, because I haven't gotten this before, but one of the questions that really gets repeated a lot about, for both county commission and a lot of our local offices, is this concern about what growth is doing to our region, right? So, if you guys take just a minute and talk about how you think from county perspective, you should handle growth, because there's a lot of different perspectives on that, right? The guy that's out cutting wheat in eastern Laramie County has a very different perspective of what growth should be from, say, a downtown merchant. So, what, in your opinion, what should growth look like in Laramie County, and what should be, be working on to make sure that that, that growth and the future that we want match, that makes sense? So, Troy, if you don't mind, if you would go first, we'll just kind of keep going down the line to give everybody a chance in the barrel for first, so.
Fair enough. So, we are very, very blessed. If you look at the industries that are coming here, Magpul Industries, you look at Microsoft, the data center out west, then the data center out east, then the data center out south, and then the new data center that's coming in, I mean, we're growing, there is no doubt, and there is no doubt that we are on the northern end of the front range, which in itself is growing as well. So, I think when you're a community, you're either growing or you're dying, and I would much rather be growing, but that does come with challenges. It comes with stress on infrastructure, comes with stress on development, comes with stress on the aquifer, and so it's crucial for a county to have solid land use regulations. So, counties are bound by state statute. It's written in the statute that counties, we don't have home rule like the city does, we can't pass our own laws, but in our planning and development office, we can have land use regulations, and it is crucial, number one, to have solid land use regulations, but number two, to be flexible with those. And the number of times that we have had developments that come through our office, and people say, hey, listen, you need to do this differently or this differently, and one of the things that we always tell them is, you know what? You're right. Bring that to us in our land use regulations, and we visit those on an annual basis, and we make changes on an annual basis. And sometimes, people make changes that don't make a lot of sense. It might for that specific development, but it doesn't for the entire county. So, that's a process that we have undertaken and that we do every single year. We look at those rules, because that's what we're developing our growth based on those land use regulations, and barring solid regulations and rules, then it becomes an arbitrary and capricious type of process, that, well, this guy gets to develop and this guy doesn't for no solid reason. So, I'm very pleased that we're having growth, but, but we need to have very good rules, very good regulations to help manage that growth.
I agree with most of what Troy said. It's one of the things that got me started in my race was the land use regulations, because I would like to see that looked at. Growth is great, as long as we can sustain it and make sure that we're doing everything to protect the people already here. I'm, my concerns primarily were the water and traffic when I got started, and the schools, which I know are kind of their own thing, but I want to make sure that we're doing the studies necessary to make sure that we're safe and that we have our water and don't deplete it. So, making sure that we do those studies and really looking into the land use regulations is really important to me. I'd also like to see, in addition to the big companies coming in, and this is, you know, city as well as county, but make sure that we're able to get those small businesses in, because it, it can be tough for businesses. I've talked to people who wanted to start one, and because of regulations weren't able to. So it'd be nice to look at those and make sure that we're, we're able to allow the small businesses as well as those large centers to come in.
I think growth is impacting the entire county in more ways than one. You know, I watch the growth out into the agricultural community, and, you know, I kind of cringe when I see more farmland being torn up and made into subdivisions, yet at the same time, I know that there is a market out there for this, our rural subdivisions, and people wanting to get out of town and to live out where they can have some, I guess you'd say, space and fresh air. With that, as Commissioner Thompson indicated, there are impacts that we have to deal with, you know, water usage, traffic on our roads, law enforcement, being able to provide the emergency responses that we need to provide. So those are things that we all are looking at on a, on a regular basis with our subdivisions, and we ask for public comment from our departments on all of our site plans for subdivisions. We don't always get those comments from some of our agencies, which is disappointing, because that feedback would help us do a better job with our decisions as far as our subdivisions and the growth that's going on here in Laramie County. As far as the business is concerned, I think we need a variety of diversified business, so that we can weather the storms that, of the boom and bust cycle that we quite often see and hear about here in Wyoming. Other counties have really struggled through that, that are dependent upon the energy sector, and Laramie County has been blessed to be able to survive those and to move, and even grow during those times that other counties have struggled.
Yeah, so, the delicate balance, right? Like anything, when you have competing interests of growth and current residents, you have to find that equilibrium, and like Commissioner Thompson mentioned, we do that if you're having a set of established rules, so everybody knows what they're walking into and knows what they're playing by. And it would be arbitrary and capricious for us to change those rules midway, or say, this development's not passed because twelve people showed up and yelled really loud, and this one goes through because none of the neighbors decided to come. And so that's why we have those rules, and it's important that a Commissioner follows those rules, because when we don't, we get sued, and we have been sued, and then we don't have any land use regulations outside the zone boundary. The state Supreme Court, in a case that was decided in my first term regarding Rock Quarry, west of town, determined that if we don't have zoning, we cannot have land use. And so that, in effect, has made the county have to look at zoning the entire county. And that can be a scary term. You know, a lot of residents, especially in the rural parts of the community, do not want to be zoned. Well, the solution is, we zone to the boundaries, and we call it the land use zone, and all those previous rules that they all followed then come into play, but it has a zoning classification, and they know the rules that they're playing by. So we're able to do that. Like they mentioned, there is, with growth comes stresses on infrastructure, and so it's a balance. There's not, it's not a one-for-one. The property taxes on a house versus ag land, the increase in taxes don't equate to being able to pay for the services that house requires. And so we need to look at that and understand that we have to grow. The things holding Laramie County back at this current time are workforce and housing. So how do we accommodate those, also providing for the infrastructure needed to support those people in that growth? And, and it takes, you know, intelligent conversations, it takes nuance, and it takes objective thinking. We have to do all of those things to be able to tackle the problems that we face, which are great problems, you know? These are good problems that we have. So comparatively to other communities, we face, you know, really good challenges ahead, and I'm excited to tackle them.
Great, thank, great, thank you.
Dale?
Yes, oh, sorry, Bryce, I forgot, we started with Troy, I apologize.
No problem. So I'll be, I'll try to be brief here. So I'm certainly in favor of development as well, and not only residential development, but the commercial and industrial development that Troy was talking about earlier as well, and I think that's coming. And it's, it's not just the Microsoft data centers, you know, that the energy landscape in the country is changing, and Wyoming is at the forefront of that. You know, we're talking about large infrastructure projects coming into the state of Wyoming and into Laramie County as well. We need to plan for those. Development is not something that should be done to us, it should be done for us. And I agree with Abby that, that we've got a water issue that we've, we've got to get to the bottom of, but beyond just the water issue, we don't want to, at least I don't want to, Laramie County to become a front-range extension, an annex of the front range. I want growth and development in our county to be sustainable, and I want it to preserve the quality of life and the character of Laramie County, our heritage that we've worked so hard over the last hundred and fifty years to build. So that's why I think we need to really be proactive in the way we think about growth. I think, as Commissioner Thompson said, and Commissioner Mom said, there are rules in place. I think I would be less willing to apply those rules with flexibility. I think if you don't like the rules that you have in place, you change the rules, you don't arbitrarily give an exception to one or more developers that that comes before you. You apply the, you apply the rules fairly and equitably among all.
Thank you. So, we would take questions for the audience, if anybody has one at this time?
Thank you. My name is Sylvia Hackle, and I live on the east edge of Cheyenne, but within the city limits. And yesterday, twenty-five hundred households on the east edge of Cheyenne lost power. When I talked to the representative at Black Hills Energy, he said that one of the businesses in the east Cheyenne Business Park tripped a major breaker, and the power was off for about two hours. And he's the one that gave me all that information, I didn't make it up. And, you know, it's hard to get your garage door open without any electricity, we're all used to those things. So, you know, I honestly don't know if that was in the city or in the county, but let's say I, as a constituent, called you and said, I couldn't dry my hair this morning because I didn't have any power. You know, how would you look into that, and what would your thoughts be?
So we'll start with Abby for this round.
Okay, does that sound better? Okay. So if I was called for an issue like that, I would myself reach out to Black Hills and see what they had to say, and make sure that they were working on it, and what could be done in the meantime, to make sure that the residents were in good shape and could do what they needed to do, but that's, it's, it's definitely just reaching out and seeing what else, that everything that they can do is being done. I don't know much more about electricity other than that.
I think with the franchise interest with electricity here in Laramie County, whether you have High West or Black Hills Light and Power, first thing you have to determine is which franchise is involved. In this case, it was Black Hills Light, Fuel, and Power. Again, finding out, you know, what the situation is, what caused it, trying to get the word out that they are working on the solution to the problem. One of the things that comes to mind as a result of this question, a few years ago, we had what we called Storm Aggedon with the big snowstorm, and I know that the county was highly involved in helping Black Hills and High West get out to their power lines so that they could get electricity back on. Some cases, it took several days because the infrastructure was damaged to the point that they had to replace poles, not just reconnect wires. So, I think it's one of those things that, finding out what the situation is, are there any resources maybe that the county can help assist with in the long term, and getting the equipment and employees out to fix the problem.
So, great question, Sylvia. I don't have to imagine. I had twenty calls yesterday, because I represent an apartment building in that area, and I had twenty tenants that needed to get to doctor's appointments, work, et cetera, and they couldn't get out of their garages. So I was right there with you, trying to solve this problem. The honest answer is, the government can't solve it, but what we can do is have honest communication and good relationships with our partners in the private industry, and so that's what we seek to do. Got a great relationship with folks at Black Hills, the same with High West Energy, and the immediacy of the problem. So you tackle it, see how long is this going to last? They generally have an idea. Relatively short. Okay, what do we do in the future to prevent this from happening again? And that's where we, the work begins of a partnership between the government potentially, and these private companies, is, okay, what happened, and how do we prevent it? And so, that's what I would look to do, look to a long-term solution to minimize those impacts. They're going to happen, it's like a total first-world problem, I don't have power, you know, like, but it's still an inconvenience and still something that we should try and avoid, and so making sure in the future that we don't have those problems, or have them as minimally as possible, is, I think, the best solution.
So, that's a good question. Sylvia, I was not here over the weekend, so I didn't hear about the powder, power outage in east Cheyenne, but of the five of us up here today, I'm probably the most qualified to answer this question. When there is a utility outage, one of the first calls that gets made by the utility is to the Public Service Commission. The Public Service Commission has somebody twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, that carries the football. And the football is a phone that is called by the utilities to notify the Public Service Commission. They have a rapid response team that engages other state agencies to make sure that those outages are taken care of as quickly as possible. Ninety-five percent of outages, electric outages in the state are either weather-related or human-caused, big ends, damage to the lines. So it's rare to have equipment failures, but Cheyenne Light system is stressed. We've got a lot of new boats coming on, that they're planning to build about two-hundred-and-sixty million dollars of new transmission, because right now, Cheyenne Light is dependent on the Western Area Power Administration to deliver power into the city of Cheyenne. They're going to build a new transmission link, so that they're not dependent on WAPA anymore. WAPA, as a federal agency, is not that well-funded, they're not that reactive, so it will be better, I think, from an outage standpoint, when we have some redundancy in the system. They won't any longer be dependent on WAPA, but WAPA will be there for a backup in case their transmission system fails. So we'll have some redundancy there.
Can everybody hear okay? There's a lot of noise in the background. I want to make sure everybody can hear. If not, we'll, we'll talk up. Everybody good? Okay, so I'm going to agree with my colleagues up here, it's all about communication. You know, we can call, but I would back up a little bit and say, not only is it communication, but more importantly, it's those relationships, and it's the relationships that our commission has with High West, has with Black Hills, and those relationships don't just happen, they come from being out in the community, they come from being at Frontier Days, and the rodeo booth, walking through, thanking our sponsors, shaking hands. So it's much easier when I call somebody with Black Hills, or when I call somebody with High West, they say, oh yeah, Troy, you know, how are you doing? How's Beth? They know the face, they understand that. So I would tell you, yes, we would communicate, we would call, we would, we would get to the bottom of this, but more importantly, I would say, what happens in the years prior to that, or what's more important, because we would have those relationships built. And I hope you never have to show up in the DA's office without your hair being blow-dried.
All right, do we have another question from the audience that you would like to ask? So we got plenty, if you don't have them, but we want to offer opportunity every cycle. So, I want to go back to your discussion of growth, and got to be a lot of land, land issue, land use, but I guess the first question, question related to this that we'd like to ask is, one of the things the county commission does is, you're responsible for roads out in the county. And so as you've got growth and subdivisions, you have a challenge to those roads, and everybody wants the snow cleared immediately so they can get to work. So, talk about that challenge that you see as a county commissioner, and what you think our approach should be. You know, I'll give you an idea of what I'm, of the kinds of things I'm thinking about, the road north of, of Pine Bluffs going up to La Grange, where you have to make a judgment on, are we going to pave these roads, are we going to keep them gravel, what are we going to do? So talk about the county commissioners, commissions' role with roads, and what do you think our future looks like as we balance costs versus wants in that area? And so Linda, I guess, that's an easy one, right, for you to tee off on, and I'm smiling as I say that, but.
Roads are one of those things that, the most important road is that one right in front of your house, regardless of whether it's paved or gravelled. You know, I have fielded a lot of calls from residents out in the eastern part of the county concerning roads, some of them more often than others because of the type of traffic that's on those roads, and the impact that traffic has caused to the roads. I think the big challenge for the county is prioritizing, the most traveled roads are going to get the most attention. We can't ignore those roads that don't get the amount of traffic, say that, say, well, I'm going to use my road, for example, that's closest to my house, one forty does, or, or two fifteen, which is railroad road, I could go on and I could name number, or give you numbers and road names, and you'd all say, that's nice. But we have some roads that do get a lot more traffic on. We call those arterials, they are roads that feed into the bigger collectors such as I-80 or I-30. Those roads are going to get more attention, are going to be snow plowed first, and when it comes to the road maintenance, we have districts where our bladehands work the roads within those districts, and judge by the amount of traffic, the use, the conditions of the roads as to when they need to come back. Public Works is working on an asset management program right now that will help us better identify which roads need what type of work and when, and that would include additional gravel, road maintenance, just getting a blade out. I think there's an element too, that comes to educate the public as to driving on our county roads. They're gravel, they're subject to the weather, when it's dry, they're dusty, the fines sift out of the rock. You see that dust cloud behind a vehicle, that's those fines moving out, and it is causing the corrugation in the roads, and the only way we can do it, fix it, is to go in and rip it, put water on it, pack it down, and that water does not stay there very long.
Awesome. Well, thanks, Dale, bringing up a really kind of traumatic memory for me about Road 164 north of Albin. I'm no longer invited to a couple of family reunions in the area, based upon our decision to not repave the road, but to turn it back to gravel. But honestly, it comes down to how we make a majority of our decisions, and that's the data. That's the information that we're presented with in terms of average trip in terms of average trips per day, usage, all of those things, current materials that make up the road. And so in that particular instance, we went out, we put traffic counters. There are 250 trips a week on that road. For us to require a developer that's building a development to pave a road in Laramie County, it has to be raised above 350 trips per day. And so there's a disparity there, right? And obviously, those residents don't agree with the data points that we used and the information that we went by. But that's how we have to make decisions because we have a finite amount of resources available to us. We have 1,400 miles of road in the county. We no longer accept roads within subdivisions that we plot because we simply cannot take on that extra burden. We have a finite amount of employees, money to run the machines, machines that are money to buy machines. And so it's an allocation of resources and using the data available to us to make the best decision possible about where to deploy those resources. It's also an education piece. You move to the county because you want space. You're also moving to an area where services are a little bit more limited. You can't get to the grocery store in 10 minutes. If it snows, you might be there a day. Those are the kinds of things that people have to understand as they move to our community, that you're moving to a rural community and you're choosing to live in an area where services might not be as readily available to you as if you lived in the city of Cheyenne.
Well, I was at the Albin Day celebration last Saturday and talked with many of my friends down in eastern Laramie County and got an earful about the roads. You got to remember, as Commissioner Mullin just said, that many of the roads that get traveled in Laramie County are not maintained by the county. The main roads are, the numbered roads are maintained, but roads within subdivisions are not maintained. So that doesn't mean that they get hit once in a while. That means they're never maintained. So like, I live in a rural subdivision with large lots and we do the best job we can as homeowners to try to maintain that road, but it never gets maintained professionally by the county. And at some point, that gets to be a public health and safety issue because if you can't drive on the road if it washes out, then you've got a problem with emergency vehicle access. If you have a grass fire and the firefighters have to navigate those roads that are not well-maintained. If you have a health emergency at one of those residences and the first responders can't get in and out as fast as they should. So it really, we need to figure out some way that we can uphold our responsibility in Laramie County to the citizens because remember, those rural homeowners pay taxes just like everybody else does. And so I think the feeling is in those rural areas that they'd like to get a little bit of what they pay for. So I would like to do an inventory. I've got some ideas about how we could maybe not maintain them as often as we do other roads, but it would be good to hit those roads periodically with a trained blade operator so that we can at least have them in some kind of shape.
So Dale, that's a, that's a very in-depth question and I could probably go on for an hour talking about roads. I think first and foremost, the policy to not take on new roads. So Laramie County, prior to when I was in office, made the decision we could no longer take on new roads. So we don't take on subdivisions. So there's that component where we need to make sure people know when they move to a new subdivision, maintenance will be on them. And then there's this new component where we talk about having them create a self-improvement district where they can actually tax themselves so that they can afford to maintain those roads. I don't think people understand what it takes to maintain a road. I know I certainly didn't. I'm a veterinarian. I mean, I never understood roads till I got into office, which brings me to my next point. I think the best thing that this commission can do is hire the best people possible to manage our public works department and to work in our public works department. So that's number one. Number two is then to give them the tools to do that job as best they can. And when I look at our public works department, I've seen the improvement we've made. We just approved some ARPA funds to go to a strategic plan for our roads. So it's the data that we talk about that we use to make these decisions. Those are the tools that I'm talking about. We give our employees the tools and we hire the best employees and let them do their job.
So I agree with a lot of what's already been said. It's a little hard to go last with a question like that. I think the roads really do need to be made a priority again in the county and really look into it, like Mr. Freeman said, do an inventory again of all the roads and see what can be done with the new subdivisions. Maybe the best course is to allow the taxing of themselves, like Mr. Thompson, Dr. Thompson said. But maybe there's another way to go about that so that the county can help those citizens as they move in here. And I'd like to just really look at all of that again and see what can be done. And just make it, bring it back up the list and make it a bigger priority within the county and go from there.
All right, we have a question from the audience, so.
Kaylee Garrett with Ryman Corp. So during the last term, we all experienced the crisis of COVID-19. Some of you were in office, some of you weren't. Could you just real briefly talk about your experience if you were in office and how that strain brought out some of your guiding principles as elected officials? And if you weren't in office, some of the things you saw our elected officials do or not do that you would have done different? Hopefully, we don't have another crisis like that in the next term. But just theoretically, what are your guiding principles when you have such a contentious and life-altering event happen during your term as an elected official?
Thank you, Kaylee. Yeah, so I was, well, I'll start with Commissioner Ash probably had the most fortuitous resignation prior to something of anyone of all time. I mean, she moved on to her other employer, like a week before COVID. So I became chairman. So I'm chairman of the commission. I'm out of the blue and we're dealing with a global pandemic. And so I tackled it like we tackle any issue, like I've mentioned, data partnerships and communication. And that's what we did from the very beginning. We had weekly calls with the Department of Health, with the hospital, with the city to determine what was going on in our community. And we relied upon experts and professionals, medical professionals. I saw real estate. Dr. Thompson's a doctor, but he, you know, it wasn't affecting animals, so he wasn't exactly, you know, an expert on the subject. And so we rely upon those subject matter experts to make the best decisions at the time with the information available. We also had to follow state law. We were in a public health emergency. So the powers of the county commission, the city of Cheyenne, all of those things were very limited. Those tools were in the hands of the Department of Health. And so we had to work well with them and have a good partnership to protect lives and protect livelihoods. And we worked hard to do that. We worked with our partners at the chamber to make sure that whenever we were rolling out either a new rule or guidance, that we were doing that in consultation with the chamber. When the chamber and businesses came to us and said, you know, our, many of our businesses are asking for masks because they want to protect their employees so that they can have workers and keep their doors open. Commissioner Thompson and I took a strong position at the, you know, with the Department of Health to go for the masking instead of closing businesses again. We weren't going to shut doors down. I wasn't going to keep people out of business. And it was an easy decision for me to make that if I can wear a piece of cloth on my face to keep people employed, keep businesses getting customers and keep checks coming into the pockets of residents, I'll do that all day, every day. And so those were, you know, some of the decisions that we had to make and that I stand behind making.
Well, obviously, I worked for the state of Wyoming, at least for another 45 days or so. And we managed through the pandemic. Our marching orders from the boss were the state is to be open. And so we kept the state open. There were some rotations that occurred so that not everybody was working in the office on the same day, but the office stayed open. With regard to the county and the things that went on there, you know, I, I think in some ways, managing through the pandemic was almost easier than managing through normal times because no matter what decision you make, you can kind of blame it on the pandemic. Oh, we had to do that because it was COVID. At the end of the day, I don't know that we'll ever get to the bottom of what was actually required in the way of response from the federal government, from the state government, from local governments. We did what we did and I'm willing to give the current commissioners the benefit of the doubt that they did it to the best of their ability. But in case you didn't get the memo, the panic, the pandemic is over. And so we need to put a different mindset on now from a fiscal standpoint in particular. We don't need to be in this panicked fiscal conservation mode. We need to return to solid fiscal conservatism. And there is a difference between the two. Conservation means that you're conserving every penny of revenue so that you can deal with the emergency at hand. Conservatism means that you use what you need to provide the services that are critical to the constituents that you serve. And whatever is left, you either give back to them or you find something that you need to spend the money on. But sitting on an abnormal pile of reserves, I think, is, we really need to reexamine our fiscal priorities.
It's a great question and much like the roads, we could go on for hours. I'm going to touch on two components. Number one, the financial burden to the county. And then number two, I'm going to touch on how lucky we were in Laramie County to have the health board and the health officer that we had. So first and foremost, so March 17th, St. Patty's Day, my wife's favorite holiday, is when we started dealing with the COVID pandemic. So that's also the time of year when we start dealing with our budget. So we had a lot of budget conversations and there was a lot of talk about what's going to happen with our revenues. And there is no doubt we were concerned. We were far from panicked, but there is no doubt we were concerned. And so our number one priority as a commission was to keep people employed. I'm a small businessman. I understood what was going to happen to our small business community. My clinic had to go into quarantine on one occasion. And I'm telling you, when, when you tell me I can't have clients come through my door, that hurts. Now, in that situation, there's a little bit of panic. But at the county commission level, we did not. So we knew what was going to happen with business and our discussion was, listen, we're going to keep people employed. If we have to use reserves that we have been able to create because we've been very conservative with our budget for the previous 10 years, that's what we're going to do because we want money going to our employees' paychecks, into their accounts so that they can continue to use our small businesses in Laramie County. Excuse me. And we were able to do that. And we're very proud of the fact that we were able to do that. So that's number one. Number two, we heard horror stories throughout the state of Wyoming with health officers and health boards and the fact that there was zero communication. And I would tell you that we had a very, very wonderful situation in Laramie County under the most extreme of circumstances. We had our health board, we had our health officer, we had all the elected officials, that Cheyenne, Albin, Burns, Pine Bluffs, Laramie County. On these conversations, we were involved with every single decision that was made. We didn't agree with all of them, but we had the ability to voice our opinion and we had the ability to take part in those decisions.
So I clearly wasn't on the commission when everything happened. But to me, and I know this won't be, not everybody will agree with me, but I like to leave it up to the individuals. I think we should have all still had our choice to open or close our business, to wear a mask or not. When you look at the data, because listening to the experts is important, but it's also important to look at the data yourself and to question the data and to see what is working and what isn't working. And if it's not working, not be afraid to go back and change what you have done. And I feel that a lot of, at all levels, not, I'm not just saying of commissioners who were in office at the time, but at all levels of government, new data would come out and they wouldn't change. They wouldn't go back. They wouldn't make another, you know, another decision. It was just, let's maintain even though it's showing that it didn't work, it's not working. And I, I want to make sure that we protect our individual freedoms as much as possible. If, safety and health is important too. But like I said, when the, when not all the data is agreeing and when the data is then showing that it's not working, we need to change things.
COVID, two years of it. Going into it, I don't think any of us really knew what we were dealing with. I remember the first briefing that I had on it was in February, shortly after they found the first case on the west coast. Nobody really knew what we were looking at. I mean, was it something very serious? Were we looking at something that was a serious cold? Was it like the flu? You know, what is the initial treatment? Were we looking at, you know, lots of rest, liquids, that kind of thing, using Tylenol to treat? We didn't really know what we were looking at. And I think going into the first year, there were still a lot of questions as to just exactly what COVID was. And from a governing standpoint, when we started seeing that our businesses were struggling, when people were staying home, they weren't spending money in our businesses, we became concerned what the county revenues were going to look like. We saw our oil industry basically shut down, closing in a lot of wells. So we watched that, those revenues. And when it came to the budget, we were very conservative going into that first year, not quite knowing what we were looking at into the future and knowing that the five of us as a commission might have to sit down and figure out, do we need to tighten our belts further? You know, where do we stand? And we had a very close communication with our financial officers in our county clerk's office throughout that first year. You know, I'm like Abby, I'm a big advocate for personal responsibility. I think that masking should have been left up to the businesses, up to the individuals. Make your own choice for your own health. That's where I stand. And, you know, when the businesses came to us asking for relief from the masking mandates, it was just about a week, week and a half later that the governor started to loosen that up. And I think our businesses, business community really appreciated that. Coming out of the first year, we were able to look at our resources and our revenues and make some adjustments and plan for a little brighter future.
Can I just briefly respond to something about the data and the numbers on some of our decision-making? I would, I would respectfully say that the actions that we took did, in fact, help our community. At the time, November, our hospital was becoming overrun, our ICU. I won't even begin to try and guess at how many people were in the ICU and on ventilators. But when we made that decision and whether it was masks or heightened awareness of individuals or whatever, yeah, I can't pinpoint that it was masks. But from that point on, our numbers then started to decrease until the government, or until the governor saw that the numbers were at a level that he felt that we could ease those restrictions. And so I would respectfully say that those items did work. They freed up space in our hospital so that if somebody had a heart attack, they weren't not going to get a bed because it was full of people that have COVID-19.
Might give anybody a chance for 30 seconds if they had anything else or felt like they're confronted on that, so. Okay, any other questions from the audience at this time?
So I am a mother and there are several people like me, parents, that are very concerned about the pornography that is in the sections in the county library here and also in the school libraries. And so for those of you, so it's a two-part question. For those of you who are currently serving, what have you done about it as far as the funding for books like that in protecting children from pornography? And for those of you that, if you're elected, how would you handle that? And what's your moral stance on, on that exposure of pornography in children? And then specifically, for instance, in the county library, it's seventh through 12th grade that have direct access to very explicit pictures and descriptions of sexual acts. Thanks.
Well, this is one of those questions where maybe you don't want to be the first one. one out of the gate, but I'll, I'll take a shot at it. You know, I'm going to be 62 at the end of next month, so the world I grew up in is quite a bit different than the world that we live in now. And in a lot of respects, I don't think that the world I grew up in was a bad world. I think there's a lot of lessons that we could learn from the past and apply to the present and the future. Personal alone children. First Amendment arguments. So I think your idea of public funding for those sorts of things is a good one, and we ought to examine that. The commission has, one of its members is a liaison to the county library board, and that liaison ought to be active to that board. And it ought to bring the concerns of Laramie County citizens to the library board about that. I would also encourage, just like constituents would bring concerns to the county commission, that you go to the county library board, to their meetings, and bring up those issues and make it known that you don't like that. I can't imagine that there's going to be a loud outcry of people that want more of that kind of stuff in the library. So congratulations for bringing that question up. And if I'm lucky enough to get elected, I'm going to pay attention to it.
So a lot of parts to your question. First of all, you question our morals. We'll tell you, I'm a cradle Catholic, I'm a conservative Christian, and I live my life that way. My wife and I raise our kids that way. Specific to the library, we are very blessed in Laramie County to have a wonderful librarian and a tradition of wonderful librarians. We've got a very intelligent, very bright library board. So the library is in great hands, but I would tell you, when you start talking about banning books, and that's what you're talking about, that is a very slippery slope, and I am not in favor of, and I am not in favor of, not in favor of banning books, but I certainly am in favor of parent options. And I do think parents need to play a role in what their kids are reading, what their kids are looking at.
So my kids are all young, they're between the ages of five and 10, and it's also both in the public library and in the schools as they get older and get more access to those books in the libraries. I'm not in favor of banning books. However, we do have restrictions on our movies. You can't go to an R V movie without parental consent. When I was in high school, I had to get a permission slip to watch Schindler's List after we watched, after we studied the Holocaust because it's deemed not appropriate by the, by the people who oversee the movies. And I think we need to look a little more closely at our books and see if we can do some sort of structure like that, you know, have different levels of books available and then, and have, you know, then have access to that based on how old they are. I agree with Bryce and Troy, it's disgusting, it shouldn't, I would prefer if it wasn't there at all, but at the very least, we need to see how we can get some sort of system in place to rank those books so that they aren't just really available to the kids without book burning.
First COVID and now books in the library. You know, I, I agree with, when you start looking at possibly banning books or moving books from the library, you're looking at a First Amendment right. Libraries are a source of information and long have been. However, I find that many of the books that we are becoming aware of that are in our libraries, whether it's at the school or the county level, the city libraries across the nation, I find very objectionable. I don't appreciate the content in them. I wouldn't want my grandchildren seeing those books. So my thought is, is that if we're going to have those books in the library, let's put them all in the adult section so that our children aren't exposed to them on a regular basis. And when it comes to our schools, that's a decision that's going to have to be made by the school boards, but I would encourage them to reconsider using those books, especially in the elementary and junior high level, where our children's minds are still being formed. Let them be children.
Thanks for the question. So like Troy mentioned, we have a great librarian, a great library board, probably one of our most competent boards of the diverse group of folks. And if you've ever seen the list and how they rank people that apply for the board and who they think should be put on there, it's probably the most comprehensive matrix that you've ever seen. It's exactly what you'd expect from a librarian. But so I have all the confidence in the world in our library and our library board. In terms of banning books, I'm not in favor of it. I think that there is, you know, parental responsibility. If you don't want your child to read a book, the library is not a daycare, it's a, it's a public building, but you need to responsibly be with your children and see what they're checking out. If it's an age restriction, restriction on checking out a book, you know, that's a policy decision for the library board to make, not the county commission. Schools are the same way. There's a school board, they're duly elected, they're not trying to do my job, I'm not trying to do theirs.
So they will be around after this, so visit with them because we are, we've got time for probably one more question, and then we'll get, we'll let Gunner get re-invited to some of his family reunions by having a wrap-up by everybody. So do we have any other questions from our audience on a topic you haven't heard from?
So there's a little pocket of the county that's sitting in the middle of Cheyenne, is that right? Is there any, yeah, is there any plans on making, like giving that up to the city? Because I know they had that big fire, and I remember driving home that day, and I drove into different neighborhoods that I'd never seen before, but is there any plans for that?
So unfortunately, when we talk about annexation, there's state law that dictates how annexation happens. And the county actually does not have any say in whether or not land gets annexed. So that's a conversation between the city and the landowner. There are a lot of pockets. You know, when Mayor Collins came to me and chatted with me about this a week ago, he said, what are your feelings? I said, as long as you're not forcing people to annex, then I'm okay with it, which means that there's going to be open lines of communication and that they're going to have negotiations as to how that takes place, what services are provided, and what require, what is required of the landowner. Beyond that, I am not in favor of forced annexation. Unfortunately, I think the city is going to go that route, but I would also tell you that Patrick Collins is a very bright individual, and he is wonderful at negotiating and at talking to people. And so I do think the city is planning on force annexation, but I also think that it will be done in such a way that it, that it will be amicable with the landowner, and I certainly hope that's the case.
So like Dr. Thompson said, it is really a city issue. They can annex whenever, whatever they want. It seems, if I'm understanding state law right, and I just read about it the other day, I also know that it's made the papers recently that the city, that's one of their priorities over this coming year, is to annex most of those pockets. And I just hope that they respect the individuals who live there and don't force it on them if they don't want it, and do hold to their word of not requiring them to come up to city standards until they, if they rezone or it changes hands in some way, which is what they say is going to happen. And I hope that if they do annex these properties, that that is true and not put any hardship on the people who live there.
Mayor Collins and I had a discussion about this several years ago, about what would happen with the city pockets and some of the issues that were arriving from having those, those county pockets within the city. At that point in time, he told me that, yes, I do have a plan, it, you know, it's all written out, but when I was on council, it was kind of pushed back and, and we didn't follow through with it. So now I guess he's pulled that book off the shelf, dusted it off, and he's looking at it again. I too have a concern about the financial impact to those residents that live in those county pockets. You know, we all hear about curb and gutter, curb and gutter, and the expense of having curb and gutter, hooking into city utilities, whether it's BoP, water, you know, water sewer, they're most likely already on Black Hills, so that's not going to be an issue. But I am concerned about the financial impact to those residents. I have not seen Mayor Collins' plan, I don't know what he's, what that notebook binder said, but I would hope that there's some kind of a graduated move towards the financial expenses that those residents are going to feel, whether it's when they hook into water and sewer or are asked to do curb and gutter along their properties. If you have a corner lot, you have twice the amount of distance to pay for curb and gutter. So there's going to be a financial impact there. I hope that the city can come up with a partnership that they can use to work with the residents, that there's a lot of communication back and forth and a lot of transparency as to how this process is going to move forward. There's some benefits to it as far as our emergency responders, knowing who's going to go where. Right now, it kind of seems to be a first come, first served, who gets there first, which is confusing because these residents that are in these county pockets, especially in fire, are paying property taxes to support a certain fire district, but yet it may be the city that responds to them. So lots of questions to be answered, yep.
Yeah, great question. So like has been mentioned, county plays or has very little authority in the matter. So it comes back to a number, or a couple of points that I've talked about multiple times, communication and relationships. And I'm happy to report that right now, the current commission and the current city council probably have one of the best working relationships we've had in the history of, at least my lifetime. You know, there's, there's not that animosity that maybe once existed. So it allows us to have an honest conversation with Mayor Collins, with members of the council, and say, you know, if you're going to do this, which I also am against forced annexation, how can we make it as least burdensome on county residents as possible? And have those conversations and come to compromises to protect residents, protect their current use. I know a big part of it is they will get a non-conforming use zoning if they're annexed into the city, so they'll be able to continue to use and enjoy their property as they currently do if it's a business. And so it's just about those relationships and making it as least burdensome on residents as possible. And that happens when you have a good working relationship with the entity that really holds all the cards, and that's what's happening in this case, so.
Well, at the risk of sounding like a broken record, I agree wholeheartedly with, I think, everybody that's spoken so far. I believe fundamentally in private property rights, and I think that the city ought to tread very carefully on the annexation issue. I've been around long enough to remember the big land grab that went on during the Pandu administration, 25 or 30 years ago, when they were going to annex a bunch of property, not just the county pockets, but a bunch of perimeter property around the city of Cheyenne. And I happened to live at that time in an area that they proposed to annex on two and a half acres. Well, it never really panned out for them. But one thing I think is a follow-on issue here, I had a constituent that I talked to personally here a couple of weeks ago who lives in a county pocket that is at risk of being annexed. And like he said, getting city services after you're annexed is, is one thing, but the follow-on issue that he brought up is, he had received a letter from the cities saying that they were planning on taking his property by eminent domain to convey it to another developer so that it could be developed into ostensibly low-income housing. And that, to me, is just untenable. I don't think the county commission can do anything about that, but boy, if you're a private property owner that's lived in a home for 50 years and you don't want to sell it, you shouldn't have to sell it. You should be able to live there, even at market value. There's some of these old people, they just want to live out the rest of their years in the home that they've had for 50, 60 years. So that's the follow-on issue that I think we need to be really worried about, because if that can happen in the county pockets, it could happen anywhere in Cheyenne.
So I want to give each of you a moment, just a minute, just to close out, but I don't want to make it that easy, Troy, you've been saying, ask questions that take hours, and I get that, but, you know, from the chamber's standpoint, we're definitely a, an organization that believes in vision. And there's a, there's a quote that basically says that a vision is about seeing what is invisible to others. So as you close out today and everybody get two minutes to do this, tell us what your vision for Laramie County is and how that fits into why you're running for office. What is your vision for county? What do you see for the future?
So, sorry, my vision for the future of Cheyenne is to keep it with the same, the same way of life that we've all enjoyed, but also allow it to grow in a way that makes it even better for all of us. I'd love to see more small businesses come into town, more things for families. I said I have small children, I would love to have more things for us to be able to do, for us to expand on Frontier Days and bring in more visitors, have more things for visitors to come do, but keep us the smaller town that we all love and enjoy here.
You are right, it's invisible because we have to pretend to be profits. When it comes to business within Laramie County, I think that we not only will need to be addressing future business within Cheyenne, but also in our rural areas and protect our ag interests. I'm aware of some, some businesses out in the rural areas that are really providing a benefit to our agricultural economy. Is it corn emulsion, I believe, is the name of it, that they're doing out by burns that breaks down corn to make it more digestible for livestock? You know, businesses along that line that willing to be an asset to our ag community and provide jobs as they grow in the future. As far as businesses within the county, I want to see businesses come in that fit the county, and we've got concerns with water, we've got concerns perhaps with sprawl from Cheyenne coming out into the rural areas. We need to be looking at how those businesses will impact what we love here, our heritage, but still looking ahead to the future as to what we want Laramie County to be. My children live here, two of them do, with their young families under the age of three, and I'm concerned about what Laramie County will be when those children grow up. So if we don't be proactive now and looking ahead into the future, what will they have? You know, life is what we make of it. If we don't invest in our community, who will?
Great, thanks, question, great question, Dale. And thanks, guys, for allowing us to come today. So my political slogan is rooted in Cheyenne, rooted in Laramie County with a vision for the future. My family's been here for six generations, we've made a living in agriculture up until the last generation, and my dad moved to town and was a small businessman in the cabinet industry. He saw a need for that niche. And so as a leader, it's my responsibility to look to the future and see that stuff that's unseeable. And how we do that is we provide the infrastructure that is needed for, for growth. We also lower the barriers to that growth and make sure that we're working with our partners across industry and business to make that next entrepreneur that sees a need in the community be able to succeed. We have to foster an environment that allows for families to grow and want to come and live here. And so we do all those, all of those things by having open communication with the public and seeing exactly what they want their community to look like. They're the ones who choose. That's the greatest thing about the six penny election. We get a host of projects, projects together, and the community and voters of this community are We get a host of projects together and the community and voters of this community or voters of this county decide what the needs are for the next five years. And so looking ahead, we have to just make sure that we're always looking, not just today, being proactive into the future about infrastructure needs, public safety needs and community enhancement needs and what it'll look like. And I'm excited to continue that work that we've started in advocating for economic development, diversified industries and just making this the place that my family has been fortunate to call home for over 140 years.
So as a small business owner and an ag producer in Laramie County, as well as someone who has had a fabulous career in state government, dealing with really hard issues on behalf of Wyoming citizens, my vision is relatively unimportant. I'll tell you what it is, but I'm more interested in your vision for Laramie County because if I'm elected to be a commissioner, I'm your representative at the county commission. It's not my vision that matters, it's your vision. Everybody in this room and everybody behind the counter, so I want to hear what your vision for Laramie County is. As far as my vision for Laramie County, I think we need to be smart. Changes are coming. We've got some problems, we've talked about most of them today. We've got some unknowns about the water. We've got some problems with budgeting. We've got a lot of problems with transparency and accountability. So we need to work on those things. But as far as my vision for Laramie County, I want us to grow on a sustainable basis. I want there to be enough water 50 years from now that we can still grow and keep our community viable and healthy, while at the same time, as Abby said, preserving the quality of life that we've worked so hard to build over the last 150 years and the character of Laramie County. I don't want us to be another Larimer County. I don't want us to be another Weld County. I want us to be Laramie County. And that's going to take some forethought. You know, just because we have rules and regulations in place doesn't mean that we don't have to think about how we develop. We need a plan, not only land use planning, but social planning as well. How do we want the community to look?
We need anybody in this room to not tell me this isn't the greatest county and the greatest state in the world, honestly. So it's wonderful, there's a reason we live in Laramie County and I love it. I love Laramie County. We do a lot of things great, you know, we don't have a rec center, but what we do is we do little things with the Archer complex to invite young families. We do things with Clear Creek Park to invite young families, to get people out and about and to recreate, but we can improve. We certainly can improve. You know, there's issues that our chamber has and I'm a chamber member, I pay my dues every year. I'm a small business owner. There are challenges that this chamber faces. You know, we've got this challenge of racism with young airmen at our air force base. The air force is such a huge part of our community. We need to address those topics head-on. We need to make our community inviting for those young airmen, those minorities that are airmen. We need to make sure that if we have people that don't see with that, do what the chamber director and what our mayor is doing and go visit with those businesses. If you see elected officials with Confederate flag stickers on their car, you call them out and you have them not do that anymore because we need to be more welcoming to businesses, to minorities, to airmen. And we continue to improve. And yes, we're the greatest county and the greatest state in America, in the world, but we improve as much as we can in every way that we can. And that's my vision, that's my goal. I'm Troy Thompson, ask for your vote on August 16th.
So join me in giving them a round of applause. Thank you candidates for joining us today. You know, this was a great morning. We're going to have a series of these, our precincts to POTUS. I know that Western Vista has helped with a couple of these programs, Ryman. We thank you guys for your support. We can't do it without our members and without folks who believe in us and move us forward. So please stay tuned for, as we roll through, one of the things we're going to do this year, we had education brought up a couple of times that alluded to in questions. We're going to talk to the school board as we move forward. So I know some of you will be interested in that. Thank you all for coming. Have a great day in Laramie County. Thank you candidates for participating with us.